Good evening and welcome to the May 20th, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. We are a policy implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land use planning projects such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews the below-market rate, or BMR, housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementation of the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. I will now call the role. Commissioner Bruzzi.
Present.
Commissioner Doe.
Present.
Vice Chair Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Here.
Commissioner Cillian.
Here.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Present.
And I am Chair Schindler, also present, so we have seven commissioners here in chambers, which is a quorum. The next item on...
Excuse me, Chair Doe, did I miss Commissioner Doe's present? Did I miss that? I did, okay, sorry.
You did. Whoa. All right, the next item on our agenda, C, is reports and announcements. Mr. Prada, are there any staff reports or announcements this evening?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Schindler and members of the planning commission. So, a quick report or update for the commission. Tomorrow evening, the city council at its meeting will hold a study session on the Parkline Mixed-Use Master Plan located at the SRI campus just across the street from us here. So that'll be an opportunity for the city council and the members of the community to provide general feedback on the Parkline Master Plan. So just an update for the commission, as that's a project that this commission has seen and reviewed prior. Secondly, the council is also scheduled to review amendments proposed to the community amenity operating covenant for the Menlo Uptown project at 141 Jefferson Drive. It's now referred to as Lume, or Lumee, L-U-M-E, I'm still not sure on the pronunciation. But anyway, that's an opportunity the applicants requested for the council to review changes to the operating covenant to modify the use of that space for the community amenity from a health urgent care center to community-serving uses. So that'll be before the council tomorrow evening. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions about that, those announcements? Commissioner Cillian.
Yes, thank you. I have a question about the Parkline item. Will that be coming back to the planning commission at some point? And if so, in what capacity versus tomorrow's meeting?
Yes, thank you. Happy to clarify. So the Parkline Mixed-Use Master Plan includes a number of entitlements that the planning commission will review and recommend to the council on at a future meeting. This is really an opportunity for updates to the plan proposed by the applicant since the last study session for the council and the community to review and provide feedback. Staff is currently working on the environmental review for the project, and so when the draft EIR, the Draft Environmental Impact Report, is released, the planning commission's next step with the project would be to review that draft EIR through a public hearing and provide also general comments on the project through its own study session. So this is kind of an opportunity to provide to the community an update on the plan of the applicant resubmitted, an updated version of the project that hasn't been reviewed by the council yet. So this is an early study session of that. Planning commission will review the draft EIR at a later date. We're tentatively looking at midsummer, but that is subject to many variables.
Okay, thanks. And a follow-up question, how are we able to do an environmental study if we're still finalizing the plan for the project?
Yeah, good question. Definitely veering away from clarifying questions, but I will answer this at a high level, but I think that might be the last clarifying question for this, if the chair would allow. The plan is formulated to an extent that it is able to be analyzed for the environmental analysis, and we are currently studying the updated plan in the environmental analysis. This would be an opportunity to ensure that the environmental review captures that appropriately if there are any feedback that's provided that needs to get adjusted before the release of the draft EIR to make sure that is incorporated. Thanks.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. I also have a brief announcement that I would like to include in this section of our agenda. That is that May is Affordable Housing Month, and organizations from multiple counties in the Bay Area are joining together to raise awareness and share information. There are events and content from many different sources that have been aggregated at a website, which is www-affordablehousingmonth.org, from across the Bay Area. Given the nature of the content that we talk about here in the planning commission, a lot of the information referenced here is very relevant to the affected public, to commissioners and staff, so I wanted to call attention to this particular resource. And if members of the public, commissioner, staff are interested in county-specific resources, the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County has a list of more specifically localized Any other reports or announcements? Great, thank you. Closing up on reports and announcements, we will now move into item D, the public comment portion of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limited three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will definitely have a chance to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. So, to learn how to participate, the details of how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk for the evening, Ms. Begon, to explain how you can participate, and then please to begin our public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Regarding procedures for communicating, for those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comment. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to the clerk. With that said, I hand it back to you, Chair Schindler.
Thank you very much. At this time, do we have any hands raised or comment cards turned in for this section of public comment?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. At this time, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards in person.
Great, we'll give it just a couple more seconds in case there are anybody with technical issues. Any requests at this point?
I can confirm that no comments have been submitted.
Great, thank you very much. As we have no requests at this point, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda, which brings us into section E, the consent calendar. There are no items in our consent calendar for this portion of the agenda, so I will go ahead and close the consent calendar component of our agenda and move into F, our public hearing. So for our public hearing tonight, we have two items, and we will start with F1, which addresses architectural control and sign review for 500 Willow Drive. Specifically, at this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve an architectural control permit to renovate an existing canopy, removing cornices, and changing the paint for an existing gas station located in the CMU Neighborhood Mixed-Use Zoning District. The project is also requesting a sign review for four internally illuminated signs with two proposed on the canopy, one proposed above the entrance to the gas station convenience store, and one proposed freestanding monument sign that would be 18 feet in height and would replace an existing freestanding monument sign in the same general location. One of the canopy-mounted signs would feature lettering greater than 18 inches in size, and one proposed sign would feature bright colors, red comprising more than 20% of the sign area. And determine this action is categorically exempt under sequel guidelines, section 15301's class one exemption for existing facilities. Thank you. Mr. Pruder, are there any updates on this item beyond the staff report this evening?
Thank you, Chair Schindler, and members of the planning commission and members of the public. At this time, there's a simple announcement that we had received a public comment this afternoon, which was sent to all the members of the planning commission, and I've shared that with the applicant as well, and it was generally expressing support for the project. And at this time, I have no other announcements. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have the project applicant available immediately following that, and this person will be providing some initial remarks on their project as well, virtually. Thank you.
Thank you for notifying us. I would like to just share that I did not receive, okay, and I see other members of the commission shaking their heads that we did not receive a copy of the public comment. Is it appropriate to share it either verbatim or summarized for this body, just so that we have that additional context?
I'm going to share my screen shortly. I've just set up on the meeting, and then I will show it on the screen for everyone, and I will also read it, and you'll be able to see the full comment at this time. Thank you.
Okay. We can wait for that.
to see the full comment written here. I will just say for the record, it was, it appears, to have been sent to the planning commission email, group email, which we'll be looking into that with IT as to what happened. I apologize for the inconvenience. It should have reached you, though, and I apologize for that. But getting into this, we have the information of the commenter above. I won't repeat that, and we can just scroll down to the meeting itself, comment for this meeting regarding item F1, and it reads... Okay, sorry. Dear planning commissioners and staff, I'm writing to applaud the applicant and operator of the gas station located at 500 Willow Road for submitting the requested changes in appearance and operation for city review and approval. As I read the details of the resolution and staff report, it struck me that I've never noticed, never once received a notice for similar changes implemented at the gas station at 275 El Camino Real. Not one notice from the city regarding the changes to lighting, signage, 24-hour gasoline sales, or the remodeling currently occurring. This, despite the fact that the gas station at 275 El Camino shares many of the same site location characteristics as 500 Willow, like being 50 feet from single-family homes. I would argue that the business practices of light industrial businesses like gas stations and businesses in the El Camino Real downtown-specific zone require better scrutiny and regulation from the city, particularly where businesses are near single-family homes. Can the planning commission make improvements so it's easier for city staff and residents to monitor and report changes to businesses' operating conditions? Obviously, not all business owners are as conscientious, excuse me, conscientious as this applicant. One quick observation, the staff report does not show any analysis or recommendation regarding the proposed operating hours mentioned by the applicant. Is that approved through another process/meeting, or perhaps the applicant previously was approved for such operation? Thank you for your attention. Peter. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that additional context with us. I understand that the applicant is available on Zoom to answer any questions, but does not have any additional content or presentations to be made. Is that correct?
Sorry, to clarify, the applicant would like to make some opening remarks, but I think in terms of protocol, if there are any questions for myself, staff, we can start there, and then after that, you can transition, if that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's fine. At this time, do commissioners have any clarifying questions for Mr. Pruder? Commissioner Cillian.
Chair Schindler, I would just like to ask, kind of in the spirit of honoring people's comments, that maybe staff try to respond to the comment that was just read out loud in whatever way is appropriate before we move on.
Perhaps, could you call out one of the specific questions or points of inquiry from the letter that we'd like to highlight for... This is not, let's hold that for the discussion component of this particular item. At this point, let's focus on our clarifying questions. So clarifying questions to content in the staff report, and let's be sure that we incorporate in our discussion later.
And if I may, through the chair, just to clarify, I have separately responded by email to the person commenting, so we are handling this from a staff perspective, just to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, I am not seeing any hands from commissioners for clarifying questions. I have two, and, Mr. Pruder, I'm not sure if these are best to you or to the applicant. I was not able to go to the location at night. Are any of the signs, the current signs at the gas station illuminated at night?
It is my understanding that the monument sign does have some illumination currently.
I'm sorry, which one?
At the current gas station, the monument sign contains the pricing and that information. I believe that is an illuminated sign currently, and there is a smaller illuminated sign that says Willow Cove Gas. That's on the canopy side, in a general location where the proposed new Chevron wording would be located.
Thank you. And then I had one additional question on the page in the staff report. It's staff report page 18, it's in elevation, and I wasn't sure if I was reading the dimension labels correctly. On page, it's also labeled as page A10. There is a labeling of the Chevron lettering that is proposed, and the vertical measurements have an indication of one foot and two foot. It doesn't look quite, it just, it doesn't look to scale to me, and I wasn't sure if I was misunderstanding. I was trying to understand which component of the letters were above 18 inches, and it was difficult for me to tell from reading that. Was hoping for a clarification.
Sorry, if I may, through the chair, the labeling of this indicates what the applicant's proposing in terms of dimensions, and so if there's any concern with how that's portrayed, this is what the applicant is committing to with the drawing, and so if you would like to ask that of the applicant as well, that could be the case, but this is what they're proposing for their sizing, and they've drawn this and dimensioned it as such.
Okay, thank you. So unless there are any other clarifying questions from commissioners, okay, if the applicant would like to make a presentation, we can move on to that step.
Well, good evening, commission members. My name is Arroy Solkey, and thank you, and to Mr. Pruder also, for allowing us to present this proposal of changes that we'd like to do. We are currently looking to change the gas station from an independent brand to a Chevron extra-mal brand, as a well-known brand in Menlo Park, and we are looking to make standard changes to make the Chevron standard images that are their trademarks, which are across throughout the United States, and even the city of Menlo Park with their Chevrons, and the sinages are just to meet the Chevron requirement as a franchisee to Chevron. And I'm here to answer any questions. I apologize for not being present. I'm currently in Kentucky, Lexington, Kentucky, on a conference, and apologize for not being there in person.
We appreciate you being present virtually.
Of course.
Do commissioners have any clarifying questions at this time for the applicant? All right, seeing none, I guess I will quickly repeat the clarifying question that I had about the elevations. It looks like the diagram laying out the height of the Chevron lettering has the C and the H being 24 inches tall, but the rest of it being more like 12 inches tall, if I'm reading the vertical axis correctly. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, and I believe that is the standard Chevron image lettering. And just to clarify, one thing that Mr. Pruder answered a second ago, the signs that currently are on-site at night aren't illuminated. The monument sign is illuminated, the canopy signs that are on the canopy, that's the Willow Grove, is illuminated, so I just want to just clarify that that is correct.
Great, thank you very much.
Of course.
All right, so having gotten through clarifying questions, Ms. Begon, could you please invite public comment on F1 for us this evening?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon in Zoom or by pressing star nine, if calling by phone. If you're participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. Thank you. At this time, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
Thank you. We'll give it one more second. Any at this point?
There have not been any public comments submitted. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Then we will close public comment for this F1, for item F1, and move into commission discussion, and ultimately, a motion regarding the architectural control and sign review. Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I'll just start with some comments. I think the exterior modifications, which consists of repainting the store and the canopy, seem entirely reasonable in light of the brand consistency that the applicant just shared with us. I do have a couple of questions regarding the signs, and in the staff report, Mr. Pruder, you highlight, I think, four deviations from the city guidelines, one being the internal illumination and the explanation that the individual letters are lit rather than the background seems reasonable. I think the other one, another one was on the logo on the, at the north elevation, the red being 50% of the area, again, according to the staff report, that seems like it's a relatively small logo, so again, that seems reasonable. The two things I had some concern on was the lettering being, the design guidelines is typically 18 inches, and in this case, the applicant is requesting them to be 24 inches, and I think in the staff report, it says that the existing sign appears to be similar to what is being proposed, and when I look at page, I believe it's 17, 17, on the far right, there's the kind of the graphic, and then there's down below the existing, and to me, those don't seem similar. One is much more big, so that's one comment. And then on the other one, the last deviation from the standards being the sign being 18 feet tall, and I think the recommended guidelines is eight feet tall, and I, again, I am no expert on gas station signage height conventions, but when I look at the elevation on page 15 of the sign in question, you've got five feet of, just I guess, metal cladding. I'm 5'4", so that's almost the height of maybe an adult, and then above that, you have, you know, the sign, it just feels to me, again, I know that this gas station is for cars, but, you know, this is in a location that also has pedestrians and cyclists, so to me, it seems a bit, a bit big, and the last thing I'll say is, I find that with the canopy and however many gas station pumps there are, it'd be hard to miss that this is a gas station. To me, it doesn't seem necessary. Two of the four requested deviations, that being the 24-inch signage and the 18-foot monument sign, those don't seem necessary, are my comments. And I'm interested in hearing what other commissioners think. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Other commissioners?
I'm curious, we have two or maybe three other Chevron stations in Menlo Park. Is this similar or identical to what already exists signage-wise at those other stations?
I can quickly, excuse me, speak to that. We do have two other Chevron stations that are relatively similar. There is one located at, I forget the exact address, on Willow Road, but it's... but it's the corner of Willow and Hamilton in the Bellhaven neighborhood. And I would say that is probably the most updated Chevron station. There is another one located at 1200 El Camino Real, not too far from here, that is, I believe, similar. Although I do believe that the signage might be a little outdated or older. There's also one that's located in, technically in the county, on the Alameda de las Pulgas. And that one would not be Menlo Park city limits Chevron. But I believe those are the three that are the closest that are Chevron stations. And generally speaking, I believe that the one at 1199 Willow, I believe, is the address. Willow and Hamilton, that corner, that has the most up-to-date appearance, which would match many Chevrons throughout the state. And generally, I think the standardized appearance today.
Sorry, one follow-up. So specifically with regard to the sign facing the street, are those also approximately 18 feet tall? Is that normal for a gas station in Menlo Park?
Thank you for your question. I believe you're referring to the monument sign, the taller one in general.
Yes.
Sure. That one is, I think, generally similar in size, in appearance. I can't speak to the exact dimensions. But it appears that, at least in my review of these sites, street view and envisioning the different Chevrons and gas stations in the area, that these monument signs are nearly the height of the canopy. And the canopies themselves, I would say, could fit at least 15 or more feet in height underneath them. So I would assume that it's probably a similar height to near 18 feet.
Thank you, Commissioner Berusi. I'm having a hard time seeing your illuminated button from where I'm sitting. So if I am not calling on you, please wave a flag. Commissioner Silverstein, yes. And the same goes for everyone. But I'm having a slightly easier time seeing other people's lights than Commissioner Berusi. But Commissioner Silverstein.
Yeah, I think that I'm, I'd like to echo the comments that Commissioner Doe had regarding the height of the sign, deviating significantly from our guidelines. I'm looking at street view of the two other Chevrons that we currently have in Menlo Park City. The one on El Camino Real essentially has the same components, but doesn't start at that five-foot buffer and rather starts seemingly closer to ground level, which just makes it a little more present for people as opposed to, you know, designing our signs for humans as opposed to necessarily for cars. And then on the one on Hamilton and Willow, I cannot see any of that large kind of poster sign at all, which indicates prices. I don't know if I'm missing something on the street view. But yeah, I mean, I don't have any, I don't imagine that the sign height currently on Oak Grove and El Camino Real, starting at a lower height, has any significant detriment to the ability for people to see that it's a Chevron, understand the prices, and move through. I imagine that the intent from the applicant is to mirror the same height of the existing signage today, which seems to be 18 feet high. But I'm not necessarily convinced that that is a requirement from our perspective.
Commissioner Sillian.
Yeah, I think this is a question for staff through the chair, which is, is there any history of why our city, you know, design guidelines are eight feet, which is the current maximum? Like, I guess, in terms of going over that, why, and I'd be curious to hear from other commissioners why they're concerned about going over it specifically. And also from staff about where the current limit might come from, if there's any history or reasoning behind it.
Chair.
I think staff is preparing a response to the question.
Apologies, thank you for your question, Commissioner Sillian. I would initially state that these are guidelines. We have design guidelines for signs. And the nature of guidelines is that these are not exact requirements, which is why we're taking this item to planning commission. There is the option to pursue that larger sign through the sign review process, through planning commission review, which is why this is one of the requests tonight. What I would also add is, in terms of the history, how we got to these sizes and requirements, it's not really clear. This has been, I think, over many years, a process that led to these guidelines being what they are today, in addition to what we have in the zoning ordinance, which is not, it doesn't contain the same details as the guidelines have regarding sizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Silverstein, I believe you are flagged.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Sillian's question on why I would even care at all about the height of signs. And I kind of alluded to this before. But I have a general preference towards designing our city for people as opposed to cars. And the higher and bigger things are and having huge massive billboards that are dedicated towards people driving really fast and being able to see them from miles away is a functional difference as well as an aesthetic difference. That, to whatever extent we can, without significantly harming any individual establishment, kind of curtail things towards thinking about the empathy of the pedestrian, of the person who is going to be experiencing this at a slower speed and not necessarily kind of blowing things up at that huge proportion, is my general preference. That being said, I don't think it's a particularly strong one. But that's why I even commented.
Actually, through the chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, Commissioner Berusi.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. I am curious about, I feel like this has been stated and I've maybe missed it. And maybe it was in the staff report and I missed it there. So we're talking about replacing a sign that exists with exactly the same height sign? Swapping it out or no? 18 feet is definitely higher than the city standard. But what's the current, what's the height of the current sign?
The applicant has indicated that it's 18 feet currently.
Okay, all right. So the only thing that's changing is the color of the branding, et cetera?
I'd say a little more detail than that is changing. Currently, the nature of this monument sign that you see that is currently existing contains a large gap underneath it, which is actually less in compliance with the zoning, sorry, with the design guidelines for signs, wherein we don't typically allow for, prefer pole signs or signs that have these kinds of openings at the bottom. So instead of having two poles supporting the monument sign, the guidelines indicate that the preference is that the monument sign is filled all the way from ground up. And there's no gap or opening at the bottom.
Okay. I guess I would respond, my personal opinion is that I share Commissioner Silverstein's bias, except that gas stations literally are designed for cars. And so if we're replacing something that already exists with something that's kind of similar and it's working now, and it's pretty similar to what we're doing in other places around the city, I have a tough time making the applicant jump through hoops. But I'd be curious to hear what other people think. Commissioner Doe.
Yes, I just want to thank you, Commissioner Silverstein. I think you put in words well what I felt about not building things towering over people. And to Commissioner Berusi's point, I agree. A gas station, I mean, you know, you can walk in and buy a snack at the convenience store. But a gas station is designed for cars. And you want them to safely be able to be driving and see the sign and turn in. And all the same, I do feel like, I think Commissioner Silverstein put it really well. It's like, are we designing for eight-lane, you know, wide traffic? Willow is a very busy thoroughfare. There's commercial properties on there. But I wouldn't say it's a fast-paced, eight lanes of traffic. You have to have an 18-foot sign in order to see. I still feel like, even though it's designed for cars mostly to fill up, I still think we should keep pedestrians, cyclists in mind. I often walk by the Oak Grove, you know, in that area. And so thank you, Commissioner Silverstein, for pulling that up. Maybe I just, if other commissioners are amenable to it, and the applicant, maybe if the sign doesn't start at five feet, and maybe it starts lower so that the total height is 12 feet. It's twice the height of a human being would be a suggestion on my part. In the drawings, I did see that they will, it sounds like they're removing and disposing the existing sign. They're not reusing it. If they were reusing it, I think I might feel like, okay, well, at least we're keeping it out of the landfill. But if they are going to just totally remove it and replace it, I guess, again, my suggestion would be consider making it, you know, maybe not the full 18 feet. Maybe it's 12 feet. I don't know what the exact number is for, you know, safe visibility. But I'm interested in seeing if other commissioners would support that or if that would be a hardship to the applicant to consider that. Thank you.
Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you. Yeah, I have similar sentiments that have been expressed. And I'm looking at the, an image of the current sign. And it's very different in character, even if it is the same size, because it's not lit up or branded brightly at the top. It's kind of muted. And I didn't know that our design guidelines would not allow for kind of a pass-through because it would, the way that this current condition is, it actually helps people at the pedestrian level or kids be able to see through it to know if there's a car coming out or in or whatever. So I'm kind of perplexed by that condition. And if it's just because normally monument signs are quite a bit lower and they're meant to be kind of just at that entrance, kind of announcing what's, what your driveway, you're driving into kind of sign, that's a very different use case than a gas station. So I like the suggestion of bringing it down or at least bringing down the part that's very branded and lit up. And then I actually wouldn't mind if that bottom few feet, it looks like very estimating, maybe four feet are, is open in today's condition. It just feels like it fits into the neighborhood a lot better. And even though it is a busy street that leads people to and from the freeway, it's also a residential street at the same time. And there is, you know, a lot of biking along there and schools, et cetera. So I'd be supportive of a modification, especially because, as Commissioner Doe said, not, if they were modifying this exact one, it would be different. But if it's a completely new sign, I'm not sure why we need to make it quite so tall and bright and big. It's, yeah, I would agree.
Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have two questions. The first one is for staff. I guess, given the conversation tonight, if we were to want to change the height of the sign or suggest as much, would it be as simple as approving the resolution? But modifying and saying the sign can only be X feet in height, is that something we could do?
Thank you for your question. Yes, that is possible. It could be a condition that you provide. And I think you can also establish the terms of the condition in terms of if it's a staff-level review or if indeed you need to bring it back to perhaps an email to the planning commission. But it could be handled administratively, preferred with staff.
Thank you. My second question is for the applicant. And the question is, I would be interested to hear from the applicant their reflections, given the conversation on the dais. I will admit that I did not come to this meeting with a super-strong preference. However, I think other commissioners do make good points. I think it's also worth noting that this sign is on, or basically on a pedestrian path into Willow Oaks Park, through which many pedestrians do walk. So it is a gas station. I think it's fair to note that gas stations are designed for cars. This particular one happens to be basically on a pedestrian walkway. So I think it's a worthy consideration. And given Commissioner Silverstein's excellent point about the other Chevron on El Camino, which basically has this exact sign but lowered four or five feet, I would be curious to hear the applicant's opinion on whether or not that would be reasonable in this case as well.
Is the applicant able to respond, is their microphone activated, in order to address the specific questions?
Yes, Commissioner, I can answer those questions.
Thank you.
Starting with the first comment. The sign currently at Willow Road has a, the sign has a setback away from the street. So when you're comparing a sign like El Camino, that I'm very familiar with, and it's very close to where your commission board is, there is no setback. It's right on the street, right, I'm sorry, right on the sidewalk. Secondly, this sign was approved when the site was renovated. And secondly, the station down the street, 710 Willow Road, the 76 sign, 76 station, excuse me, just went through a massive remodeling. I'm assuming it went through kind of conditional use permit. And their sign is currently at 18 feet. So you are, if you restrict me or restrict this site, there is unfair competition now. And thirdly, this is Chevron standards. I mean, Chevron is a 500-pound gorilla. And they provide, they want their signage the way the current site's been ordered and approved. And like I said, the current street has, the current sign has a huge setback that is away from pedestrians or bicyclists. So, you know, like I said, we are changing, we're proposing to change the sign for the same exact height that's currently there and the same current width as it is. We're not asking for an extra or larger sign, exactly the way it is right now, but with the Chevron standard images on it.
Chair Schindler.
Thank you for your feedback. I would like to address as a follow-up question. And then we move on to the other commissioners still have questions. I think there was a reference made to things being standard execution and branding for Chevron. And I certainly think we respect, I respect the consistency of brand and design decisions that are made. I was hoping that we could hear a little bit more about why the standard for the monument, the Chevron monument sign is solid all the way down as compared to the existing sign, which is open on the bottom four or five feet. Or the sign at the 76, also on Willow Road, which is open from sort of, I'm eyeballing it, but probably six to seven feet down. Is there a specific business or user-related reason for having the monument be solid all the way from the ground to the top?
Excuse me, speaker was unmuted. That is a standard Chevron image. You could go to a freeway location, they will have a higher sign than, compared to mine. When they look to brand a location or look that's, it's going to fit Chevron's feasibility and make it a fit for their image, they look at what the station currently already has and they go with existing. And like I said, signage is all different from city to cities, street to street. But this, like I said, this particular location, the setback is pushed way against the sidewalk. So if you bring the sign down, say, five feet, then you're not going to be able to see the price signs. And then the issue we're going to run into is the weights and measures are also going to save. If it's not visible from both sides at the exact visibility, then we have to deal with weights and measures restrictions and guidelines. So it just doesn't fall as just a simple, just bring the sign down. It has to be visible. And I believe these two stations in Willow Road have been on Willow Road for a long period of time. And like I said, not to be redundant, but the 76 station, the 710 Willow Road, just went through a massive remodel. So if this was going to be a consistent matter, that price sign would have came down. But like I said, the gap between 76 and Chevron, they all, each oil company has their own rules or regulations. And also, the cladding is not all the way down. And that's what staff wanted in this way. And we went back to Chevron to make that, get that approval. get that approval, which we did, to satisfy staff's requests, but not bringing the cladding all the way down.
Thank you. Particularly that last part was a very helpful clarification for me. I understood you to say that it's not necessarily Chevron's standard requirement, that the sign is solid all the way from the ground to the top. That was a modification made to respect Menlo Park's preference for monument-type signs, which are solid from the bottom to the top. So the sign that we're seeing here tonight represents a compromise between two different sets of guidelines, the Chevron corporate and the guidelines from Menlo Park.
Correct.
Thank you. I think that's a helpful clarification. And I'll, I'll sort of build on something else that, that you said, sir, which is the point about the pricing. I do think it is important that, because there are people who make very specific decisions about if and when they choose to purchase gas on the basis of clearly displayed price points, I think it is both good for the public and fair from a business perspective to try and ensure that each gas station has the opportunity to clearly present their price as visibly as possible to people who are, who need that information. And so I am, definitely want to be sure that that's visible and up high, at least as high as the other locations of the pricing on the same, on an equivalent street. And while this has not seemed to be open, a topic of debate, I did want to just share my support for the change in coloring and other graphics. I think the combination of whites and grays, and the simplification of the cornice and some of the other things on the canopy, will just make it for a more pleasant visual experience overall. And Commissioner Silverstein, I believe you had...
Yeah, I mean, from my general perspective on this topic, I think that a much more compelling part of the conversation is equity between this location and the 76 down the street. I'm personally unconvinced that the Chevron guidelines are, would require there to be an 18-foot sign. I'm looking at the Chevron on Avenida de los Polgas and AV, which starts significantly lower. I'm also looking at the Chevron sign at State Highway 109 and near the 101, which is actually higher, but it's open at the bottom. And so I think from my perspective, and I need to think about this for a little more, so I would love for other people to take the floor, the, the question from my mind is, is it reasonable to ask this establishment to have a lower sign displaying prices than a gas station a couple blocks away, as opposed to thinking about the design guidelines of Chevron corporate, which seem to be malleable and are dependent on the specific site?
Vice Chair Eric.
Through the chair, can staff explain why there is a preference in our city guidelines for, I don't know the term, solid sign all the way down?
I'll, I'll take that question, thanks. So, let's see, the, the city's sign design guidelines related to freestanding signs do discourage pole signs. And so I think the signs were, design guidelines were drafted prior to my arrival here in Menlo Park. But over the years, I'd say, the idea was that a monument sign, as commissioners may have mentioned earlier, you know, is typically lower to the ground. And so that is the preference for solid, more pedestrian-scale monument signs, when they're about eight feet and solid versus kind of elevated on a pole. In this instance, as Mr. Pruder mentioned, kind of the goal from a staff perspective was to try to embody those guidelines a little bit more. But that, that's really it. It's really about discouraging more traditional pole signs that you see versus monument signs. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. That does help. I think I'll say that I agree with Commissioner Silverstein that, I think there is a compelling interest, and Chair Schindler, I think there is a compelling interest in equity, equity along the street for similar establishments. I'm looking at Google Street View, which may be out of date, but I don't think it is, because I drive by this fairly often, of the 76 station, which is open at the bottom. And while I think we all realize that we're talking about a gas station sign, that's what we're here to do, so I think it's important to take it seriously. So I would be in favor of a sign that was 18 feet in height, if that's what the applicant believed was necessary for equity and marketing purposes. But I would be in favor of a condition requiring an open sign, a pole sign with an opening at the bottom, so as to enable sightlines, particularly between the pedestrian path that leads to Willow Oaks Park and the gas station itself.
Commissioner Peruzzi.
This is much more formal than Complete Streets Commission. I'm getting used to it. I, I would echo or support what Commissioner or Vice Chair Eric was proposing. When you look at the 76 sign, which apparently is pretty recent, there's a lot of daylight underneath it, which means it's slightly less obnoxious. It's not a monument, it's just a sign. And I think that does fit in with the character of the area a little better. And I do think it is useful for people who are using that new bike path to be able to see as much as they possibly can about the movements of vehicles around them.
Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I appreciate the applicant. And as we all are, I am aware of the gas station one block up. I think if it had come before the commission, I would have the same concerns about height, but seeing that it does exist, you know, balancing scale within the neighborhood, and just recognizing, like, just, this is business, and you don't want to disadvantage businesses a block apart. And so I appreciate and also support Vice Chair Eric's suggestion of actually opening it up contrary to what staff had worked through. And I want to go back to what Commissioner Farrick said about the lighter color of the current sign. It's, I don't know if it's beige or white, I can't remember, but it's definitely a light color. And I do understand that this next part is probably non-negotiable, that dark gray is probably Chevron, Chevron standard. And then through, through the chair, maybe check with the applicant on that. But if, I, I could also imagine if it were white. I just, goes back to Commissioner Farrick's comment on just visual lightness. I would just pose that question through the chair to the applicant. And I understand from discussion of the branding that maybe that's absolutely not, if that dark gray could be replaced with a light gray or a white, in addition to opening it up down below, as Vice Chair Eric has suggested. Through the chair, a question to the applicant.
Thank you. So I will just try and capture the two specific points, I think, that we've asked the applicant to respond to, which is the impact of opening up the bottom, sort of, let's call it approximately five feet of the sign, has been mentioned, as well as potentially altering the perimeter of the sign, the color on the perimeter of the signs that are currently dark gray, to be something lighter. Commissioner Doe, is that an accurate reflection?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay. So I think if the applicant is still able to sort of engage through their microphone to those two questions, we would love to, to hear feedback.
Of course, Commissioners. We would rather, Chevron and myself, we'd rather have the bottom open. Like I said, we made that, we closed that up on the request of the city. But yeah, I mean, we would love to keep that thing open. So we're all on board of keeping the bottom of the sign open. Regarding the colors, that is non-negotiable. That is standard Chevron, a price sign standard. That colors are everywhere on Chevron, regarding their price sign, imaging, that is non-negotiable. And you'll, you'll have that standard gray on every Chevron station, even the ones that are in City of Menlo Park.
Thank you for that feedback. I just have a small follow-up question on the first element, opening up the bottom of the sign. Would it be open below the, the graphic part that currently is for the convenience store, the red extra mile? So I am, would, would everything sort of that is gray and solid below that be removed? Or would the design of the sign change if we were making the bottom part open?
That is correct. The answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Silverstein.
Yeah, through the chair, I would love to ask the applicant if any of those signage elements are negotiable from a branding standpoint, from Chevron. I'm looking at the 76 sign, and there is logo, there are three prices in Food Mart, as elements of the sign, which allows for anything below that to be open. Whereas when we, we look at the proposal for Chevron, there is logo, and then with Tecron, and then gasoline self-serve, and then four prices, and then extra mile, which would, I mean, if we're talking about opening up the bottom, that reduces the amount of space that's available. And I don't know what the explicit branding requirements are, as I look at other Chevron stations throughout the area. I notice that there is seemingly inconsistency on which elements are included or not included. And I don't know if that's something that we, as a commission, would feel is reasonable to, to put a minimum bar, you know, a below which would have to be open for the sign, and then leave it up to the applicant to figure out how to make that happen.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
Okay, I was, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Those are all standards that goes on. Some certain stations only have three products. Some stations have four products, like I do. We have diesel. Some stores are not extra miles, and some are. So on this particular site, Chevron approved this site to go Chevron based on their standards, that lists all four products on the sign, which is part of the weights and measure requirements with City of California. And also has the, as I said, every gas station is different, every Chevron station is different. It depends on what offering you have. They know that these offerings are available, and they are, that is their standard way of doing business. That is their standard image. So we can't take things off the sign, I will.
Thank you for that feedback.
Of course.
Commissioner Sillian.
Thank you. I have a question and a comment. Through the chair, I'd like to ask staff a question, which is if the sign was to be lowered, the applicant is expressing concern about weights and measure standards. I'm just curious if that's part of our, our staff's consideration, and whether it's possible that, you know, we as a city, or as a planning commission, would be able to permit a sign that then gets rejected by, my understanding is there's another weights and standards body that might disapprove it, and then what would happen in that case?
Thank you for your question. I'll, I'll start. So a couple of things. So in terms of the height being lower, that doesn't necessarily reduce the ability to have the weights and measures on the sign in the current configuration. It's at the discretion of the planning commission with regard to the sign design guidelines, to identify that this increased height is appropriate here for visibility purposes. So the planning commission certainly could reduce the height of the sign by a few feet, and, you know, the weights and measures, and as the applicant mentioned, kind of the identifications about the extra mile, and the diesel, and the three gasoline could be just lowered, and maintain the existing size requirements by the State of California. That would be totally within the purview of the planning commission. We also believe, from a staff perspective, the planning commission does have discretion on some of the other sign elements, in terms of like color, the gray that has been discussed by the planning commission. So since you're asking me for input on the planning commission's discretion, I think it's appropriate to mention that staff does believe that the commission does have that discretion to modify the, the colors and materials, as well as the height, provided that standard state requirements are met, such as the weights and measures, which, which just could be lowered if they are still visible, if the planning commission believes that they would be visible from the public right-of-way and vehicles and, and others entering or exiting the site, in terms of pedestrians.
Thank you. So just a quick point of clarification, there is no requirement from the state as far as visibility, meaning it has to be a certain height, given a certain setback from the sidewalk, or something along those lines. It's a judgment call on our side.
Yes, thank you. Staff's not aware of any standards from the state regulating, like, the location of the sign, the height of the sign. There are standards, as the applicant noted, regarding visibility and pricing, right? So, so gas stations have to publicize their prices, they have to meet certain criteria. Those are state requirements. But as long as those are met, and the planning commission's deliberation and discussion and potential any conditions don't violate those, that would be within the purview of the planning commission.
Thank you. Yeah, so my comment is, after listening to everyone's wonderful input, I do think that I personally feel that the sign is a bit tall for that location, given that it is next to the public park. I believe there's a couple of schools there, there's daycare, and more, more pedestrian activity, I believe, than even further up the street. I do understand the concern about the 76 station being close by and having the taller sign, which, yeah, like others have said, I don't know if we're seeing the current state of it on Google Street View. But I also, you know, I think most people that live in Menlo Park, west of 101, drive that way to get to the freeway often, so I, I drive this way as well. And, you know, if these stations were right across the street from each other, then obviously it would be quite unfair to have one sign be much taller than the other. They are, I believe, significantly far away, where you can't see one station from the other. And I think, to me, the competitive concern is still a concern, if you're driving and you see one than the other, and maybe in your mind, you know, the fact that one's shorter than the other could, could make a difference. But I think that has to be balanced with the fact that the station we're talking about now is a little bit further into the residential part of Menlo Park, and is very close to the public park, and these daycares. So I, yeah, I personally would be more comfortable with the lower signs that we're seeing at the other Chevron stations, like the one in El Camino, and the one further up Willow. It does sound like, in this case, Chevron's guidelines just looked at the existing sign, and said, let's just keep the same height. But since we're seeing other, presumably Chevron-approved signs that are much shorter, I personally would be in favor of considering that.
Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Not to preempt any further discussion, but simply in the interest of moving us forward, I would like to make a motion, which is, I think we're welcome to discuss. I'm going to ask staff to make, to confirm, after I make the motion, that it's clear enough, given what we're talking about here. But I would like to move that we consider and adopt the resolution as written in the staff report, with a condition to be confirmed by staff, in other words, not to return to the planning commission, to be confirmed by staff, that the sign we've been discussing is a pole sign that is open below five feet, one inch.
I'll second that. Okay.
Through the chair, if I may just clarify.
Please.
From a pole sign standpoint, just to make sure that we're clear when we implement this, we're speaking, excuse me, the planning commission is speaking with regard to, or the motion, second, or are speaking with regard to a pole-mounted sign with the two poles holding up the sign, not a single pole. with the two poles holding up the sign, not a single pole. That's effectively what the concern is with the design guidelines, is those single poles that go up. You see them at like In-N-Out a lot in San Carlos. I'll just say that one there is a good example.
Yes. Sign supported by two poles. If we need to specify a maximum width of those poles, I guess we could do that, but.
If it's okay with the motion, or we could say with two poles consistent or similar to existing, if that would be appropriate.
That would be just fine.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the resolution with one modification, which is that it would be confirmed by staff that the sign would be a two-pole or perhaps two poles, supported by two poles and open on the bottom beneath five feet, one inches. Any discussion? Commissioner Farrak.
I'll just, thank you. I'll just, you know, plan to support the motion and note that there's lots of examples online of, you know, a similar sign as the motion, you know, with like kind of obviously a branded standardized kind of squared-off pole on two sides. And so I think it's very doable. But actually to Commissioner Sillin's comments earlier, there's also a lot of examples that don't have, and, you know, I know the applicant was noting some offer and some don't offer all these things. But, you know, if maybe the applicant could feed back to Chevron, I have no idea what extra mile is. And I assume every Chevron gallon of gas I buy is, has Tecron. And so I'm not sure what those mean to a consumer. They mean nothing to me. But that said, I'm not going to hold up the works here because of that. So I will plan to support the motion.
Commissioner Silverstein.
If the rest of the commission is in favor of this, then I would be happy to support that. My general inclination would be to increase the opening to a higher threshold than five feet, one inches. I'm personally six feet tall and it'd be nice to be able to generally see through a sign like that. And my particular rationale is I'm unconvinced, along the lines of what Commissioner Farrak said, that all of those elements of the current proposed sign are either necessary or necessary in the exact dimensions and specifications as proposed. It's certainly possible that you could decrease the height of any given element slightly in order to increase that lower threshold that one would be able to see through. Again, self-serve, I think all gas in California is self-serve. Again, I'm not going to prescribe to the applicant which elements are more or less important. But if Vice Chair Eric would be amenable, I would be more supportive of a resolution that required at least a minimum of six feet of pass-through on any pole sign that we wanted to recommend.
While I personally would love there to be a six-foot opening, I'm a little bit uncomfortable. Not fully understanding the dynamics between the applicant and Chevron corporate and what's possible and what's not. I'm a little bit uncomfortable prescribing a situation that might result in some difficulty. I also think the current sign does not have a six-foot clearance that's there. So I see where you're coming from. I would rather not amend the motion. But if the motion fails, then certainly someone can make another motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Eric. I similarly, I will plan on supporting this motion at the five feet, one inch, because I think it allows for enough visibility. And I do not want to be prescriptive, don't want to be prescriptive either to this Chevron entity about what's important to their brand and what's not. Commissioner Doe.
I was just going to add, can't say I'm in love with the addition to the neighborhood. But I do very much appreciate hearing from the applicant the needs that they're trying to meet within their corporate branding and appreciate Vice Chair Eric suggesting the compromise. So I am happy to support the motion on the table. And to Commissioner Silverstein, you can walk around the signs that you don't bump your head.
Just.
Commissioner Farrak.
One last kind of comment to the, you know, it's not that I wouldn't be opposed to what you're saying, I just wouldn't want that to mean all of that much higher at the top end. And so that's the concern. Like, you know, I wouldn't want it to mean, well, we have to have extra mile now and.
It would, it would still have the same height limit. And then my proposal would be to leave it to the applicant to decide what sizing of the with Tecron or the self-serve sign would be.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We have had discussion about that. I'm going to go ahead now, I think, and call vote on Vice Chair Eric's motion. Commissioner Beruzzi. Yes. Commissioner Doe. Yes. Vice Chair Eric.
With compliments to Commissioner Doe for raising this issue, and I think resulting in a good discussion, and compliments to Chair Schindler for an eagle eye on the lettering diagram, which is very confusing, I vote yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillin.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
I am also a yes. So we have seven in favor and the motion passes. Thank you very much to the applicant for engaging and sharing additional context with us. It was very helpful and constructive. We appreciate you being here this evening. Great. So we will now move on to item F2. This agenda item covers architectural control and use permit at 720 Santa Cruz Avenue. In this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve an architectural control permit to modify the exterior facade of an existing commercial building, which would include changing the paint of the entire facade and modifying the materials of existing sign cabinets. Signage would be reviewed under a separate permit associated with a proposed restaurant and a retail liquor store and a use permit request for a type 41 license from State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC, for onsite alcoholic service, beer and wine only, associated with a full-service restaurant and a type 21 ABC license for off-site alcohol sale, beer, wine, and distilled spirits, associated with a liquor store at 720 Santa Cruz Avenue in the L Communal Real downtown specific plan zoning district. The proposed restaurant is a permitted use and the retail liquor store is a conditional use. The retail store component would include ancillary onsite tasting events. The request includes a modification to the previously permitted outdoor seating to allow the outdoor consumption of beer and wine associated with the restaurant and modifications to the seating layout. As part of the review, the commission will need to determine whether the on-sale, our onsite beer and wine, and off-sale beer, wine, and distilled spirits at this location serves a public convenience or necessity in accordance with the requirements of the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control and to determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines, section 15301's class one exemption for existing facilities. There we are. Mr. Hochleitner. Are there any updates from the staff report at this time?
Good evening, commissioners. I have no additional items to add to the staff report since its publication. There are several members of the project team here tonight in the chambers that will be available to answer questions from the commission. Jason Jacobite is going to introduce the project and he has a presentation that I will present.
Great. Thank you. Let's go ahead with that presentation and then we can do clarifying questions after that. And then we will move on to public comment. Thank you. I want to be sure your microphone is on.
Just a few brief slides here. All of the images that you'll see are renderings, professional renderings. The first here is the exterior of the building, 720 Santa Cruz Avenue. The Chestnut Street side is towards the right of the photo. And obviously, the other side is the left. We're proposing a new use for the space that has a full restaurant with a working title of Café Vivant on the Santa Cruz Avenue and Chestnut corner. And then deeper into the space on the left of the photograph would be Psalm Sellers Wine and Spirits, which is the type 21. Very brief background about myself and my business partner, Daniel. Daniel is also here tonight. We are hospitality professionals by trade. We have more than 20 years of high-level hospitality experience in New York City. I myself was the wine director at a restaurant called Bittard that opened in New York in 2014. We won a James Beard Award that year for best new restaurant in the United States. We were the New York Times Restaurant of the Year. We earned a Michelin star, which we held for nine consecutive years until we closed in 2023. Daniel was the wine director at the Tribeca Grill, a really legacy, you know, 30-plus-year history restaurant in New York. It is one of the, I believe, 82 recipients in the world of a Wine Spectator Grand Award. So it's an award given out for the most comprehensive wine programs in the world. It's something very close to three Michelin stars for beverage programs. So we are hospitality professionals by trade, hospitality professionals still at heart. We launched a retail business on the Upper West Side of Manhattan in 2020 called Psalm Sellers Wine and Spirits. This is a proposed second location for us. And so we are in, going on four years as business owners at retail, along with our previous experiences hospitality professionals. The project overview, I was hoping for a slightly larger projection screen or just to have my expectations more skillfully met here. But hopefully, we can piece this together. So actually, I believe the, there may have been an issue with the transcription of the image because actually, Santa Cruz Avenue should be on the, what is the left side of the screen? And Chestnut Street should be where Santa Cruz Avenue is currently positioned. So I apologize for that. So again, if you imagine that on the left side of the screen is Santa Cruz Avenue, which would be vertical on the left side, obviously on the corner you see, as I mentioned, the restaurant space. There is a bar in the middle of that restaurant space. The other entrance on the non-Chestnut side leads, of course, into the wine shop. On the restaurant side, towards the back of the space, so further away from Santa Cruz Avenue is the kitchen, full restaurant kitchen. The other large space that you see just behind the wine shop portion in the project overview is just back of house, so offices and wine storage. And then two ADA-compliant restrooms are on the top right of the photo as you see it. This is a rendering of the inside of the shop. It conforms more or less aesthetically with the shop that we've built in New York. I mentioned a couple of points of differentiation for us relative to our, the other wine and spirits retail options for residents of the community. Our business in New York really prioritizes events, educational tastings. That's everything from like, you know, 101 kind of community building, social events, to something that is more regular for us, which is masterclass-level deep-dive seminars. I mentioned also that we have a, just for our own palates, but also as entrepreneurs, we focus on a lot of small producers and a lot of hard-to-find labels, both domestic and old-world producers. So we're less brand-driven, less, you know, less of the options that our local competitors will already have available for community residents and a lot more, you know, allocated, difficult-to-source, small-batch, ultra artisanal wines, both from this country and from abroad. I also mentioned access. Daniel and I have befriended a lot of winemakers around the world and they're routinely making trips to New York to taste our customers on wines, both at free public events and also at some of the seminars that I mentioned. One of the investors in the project is a producer in the Napa Valley, who's also a close friend of ours. So we really plan to leverage our relationships to actually bring world-class producers to the community here, in addition, of course, to the inventory that we'll be offering as well. Lastly, an interior rendering of Café Vivant. The point of orientation here would be right at the corner of Chestnut and Santa Cruz Avenue. So you would be at that, at the entrance on that corner, looking into the space. Pretty straightforward. We have the bar that I mentioned that has 10-bar seats. Both the Santa Cruz Avenue window side and the Chestnut Street window side are currently envisioned as banquettes that would have like modular tables available. So they would be largely set to two tops that could be easily reassembled into four tops, six tops, eight tops, et cetera. A few freestanding tables as well. If you look straight through on the left side of the photo, of the rendering here, rather, you would be, the sightline would take you directly into the wine shop. So there is, there are two points of movement between the restaurant space and the wine shop. One is the space that I just mentioned. The other is on the right side of this rendering, which is the point of access from the kitchen into the restaurant. A very brief overview of our concept. We call it a best-of-California concept because farm-to-table has become hopelessly stale. So we will avoid that. But if it wasn't stale by repetition, we would call it farm-to-table. That's really what we have in mind. The culinary focus will be on California heritage-breed chicken, so really high-quality, non-commercial, you know, strained stock, which is often the variety of chicken that you see even in a lot of one- and two-Michelin-star restaurants. So we want to really prioritize the absolute best quality poultry, working with different farms here in California. The rest of the menu will be also farm-to-table with a lot of produce, including a lot of vegetarian, vegan, and gluten-free options. So pretty much an all-around farm-to-table restaurant. We're excited as well to propose an all-California cheese cart. In my previous restaurant, for about 10 years, I ran a cheese cart that was physically in the dining room that became a really cool, interactive part of the dining experience for people. It also plays in nicely with the fact that I think a lot of neighborhood residents that we've spoken to, in addition to being excited about the full restaurant, also like the idea of a place that they can cozy up for just a small bite, a small plate after work with a glass of wine. And we hope that having the cheese cart physically in the dining room will really communicate that to people, that there is welcome for, you know, a quick glass and a cheese plate before returning home after work as they are for, you know, a primetime, you know, corner table on a Saturday night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here for the information. At this time, do we have any clarifying questions from commissioners, either for staff or the applicant, before we move into public comment? Commissioner Silverstein.
Just so I make sure what we're voting on, can I get an explanation of what an off-sale permit is as opposed to an on-sale permit?
Sure. An off-sale permit is for packaged either alcohol, beer, wine, spirits to be taken out. On-sale is usually with a restaurant situation. So on-sale package, either beer, wine, or beer, wine, and spirits.
Great. And then another clarifying question. Is the building owner also available or is it just the operators of this potential establishment? Thank you.
The building owner is here.
Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you. Through the chair, I have a clarifying question for staff. So we're considering both a use permit and an architectural control request. The use permit, I understand, as related to California alcohol law, which was interesting to read about. to read about. I would like to just confirm that we're considering an architectural control solely because repainting the facade and modifying the materials of existing sign cabinets triggers an architectural review? Or is the architectural review somehow related to the alcohol or some other consideration?
Thank you. So in the non-residential districts, any exterior modifications that are going to be happening to a commercial building requires architectural control, especially in the downtown-specific plan area. The exterior paint colors tend to be a lightning rod for some members of the community. And so we felt that the, well, the code requires that we have architectural control for those kinds of changes. There are going to be some modifications to the built-in sign cabinets, so the materials will be changing as well. So that also triggers architectural control. Thank you.
I have two clarifying questions before we move into public comment. The first is, I believe, to staff regarding the two different types of ABC licenses. I wanted to clarify that would each of the ABC licenses apply to the entire space? Or somehow, the license 21 and the license 41 uniquely assigned to the two distinct functions of the space?
The two licenses are, they would be assigned to each of the different functions of the spaces. So the type 20, the type 21 license is in association with an established restaurant. So you need to have a restaurant to have a 21 license. The 41 license for the off-sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits would be to the liquor store portion of the site. So in accordance with California Alcohol and Beverage Control requirements, there is a division between those two uses. And when one is closed, they have to divide off that space, which they have provided a plan to do. So when the liquor store portion closes earlier than the restaurant portion, they will have signage and stanchions to indicate that that area is closed to the public.
Thank you. Because that was not the answer I was anticipating. So as it relates to the educational aspect of the retail space, where there would be simple wine classes or master classes, that, I'm assuming, includes serving alcohol. It is not, so it's onsite consumption. Is that covered under 21 or 41? Or am I missing something?
There is a condition as part of this proposed resolution that would require the applicant to get, I believe it's an 86 license for educational tastings. It's in association with a regular liquor license. I don't believe you can get it by itself. So that's one of the items that they will need to get before they can do the educational tastings.
Thank you. And just to be sure that I have understood, I will just ask a follow-up example. So it would not be possible to go and drink a glass of wine at the retail section if there were not an educational experience going on at the time? So the requirements under license 21, which covers, for example, drinking at the bar and the restaurant, does that cover drinking at, standing at the table in the retail area and having a glass of wine?
So it would be possible if somebody wanted to buy a bottle of wine at the liquor store, they could take it over to the restaurant portion of it to consume. They would have, I assume, some sort of small corkage fee or something like that. But there wouldn't be any consumption of the wine that they bought at the liquor store without being in the restaurant portion of it.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional detail. And then my final clarifying question is to the applicant. The description of the exterior changes and the visual didn't make it clear to me what happened to the stone that's kind of below the windows. So right now, the material, I'm almost certain of it, the material that's underneath the windowsill, all the way around both sides of the building, is not stucco. I believe it's some kind of stone tile. Didn't go touch it. And I don't know whether that would be included in being painted, or whether that would be left as-is.
Perhaps Dane. Yeah. Hi, I'm Dane Bunton, the architect of record for the project. So our intent is to paint the entire facade and to leave the stone underneath the windows, protect it during the painting process. It would remain as-is.
So that, just to be clear, the stone is not going to be painted?
Correct.
Just the stucco that is on the sides and sort of all the way up?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's a helpful clarification. Commissioner Sein.
Thank you. Through the chair, my question is, there is on the Santa Cruz Avenue side, some, I guess, on the street side of the sidewalk, some benches and some kind of decorative stuff, kind of City of Menlo Park stuff with our city logo and stuff. I'm just curious if that's in any way impacted by this project, or if it's just going to remain as-is.
Those items are part of the street furniture that the city has provided over the course of, you know, many decades of Santa Cruz Avenue improvements. There's no, we won't be moving those, and they're not going to be impacted by this project.
I think that's it for clarifying questions. Thank you. We may have more questions for you later, but it won't make you sit here during public comment. Ms. Beegan, could you please call for public comment and give instructions?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you're welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if calling by phone. If you're participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. As of right now, I do not see any hands raised and have not received any comment cards.
I feel there's a, Ms. Beegan's process for completing a comment card.
So through the chair, we could have the public commenter speak first, if you'd like, and then fill out the comment card after.
Thank you very much. If you would like to go ahead and speak now, sir, we can handle the comment card, the administrative head overhead moment afterwards. Thank you.
Sure. So my name's Lynn Miller. I'm one of the owners of the building with my family. Actually, been in my family since the 1950s. And I'm just here to support the applicant in what they're doing. I think it's going to be a great use for the street, and we're very excited to have them in our building. And that's really why I wanted to be here, let you know that we're very much hoping this gets approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Beegan, do we have any other hands raised or indications of?
I don't see any hands raised online and have not received any further comment cards. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Then let's go ahead and close public comment and move into the commission discussion and ultimately, a motion on the use cases and architectural control. Commissioner Farrak.
Thank you. I just want to kind of say I'm so excited about this. This is very exciting, and I'm just curious why Menlo Park gets to be among all the different places, even if you thought Bay Area, like, what drew you to Menlo Park as opposed to closer to Napa Valley, Sonoma, places like that? How are we so lucky? Come on up. You got to come up.
Yes, please.
Yeah. It's not a condition of this. I'm just literally like, this is very exciting. I mean, is it the quality gas station signs or something else?
Yeah. We heard great, great things about the planning commission in particular. We have a lot of clients and a lot of friends out here, and we actually have always wanted to seed something in the Bay Area. And San Francisco has its charms, but also its problems. And both Daniel and myself, we grew up in the suburbs, not of San Francisco. And we do business in the heart of New York City. And similarly to what I mentioned about San Francisco, there are huge benefits and also huge drawbacks to that. And we both believe in this place. We really want to be part of a massive revival on Santa Cruz Avenue, and we have a lot of people who are supporting that vision. And also, we feel like there are huge quality-of-life benefits to being bi-coastal and spending more time out here and less time in New York City. So we spent about three years looking for the right place, and 720 Santa Cruz Avenue feels like home.
Thank you. I guess my only, my question also would be, as Chair Schindler was asking about the different ABC licenses, and does that mean, just so I know, would you be able to do, you know, like, as if you went to a tasting room, you want to taste some wine? Is that something that's not allowed, then, if you're not doing a class? Or like, is that allowed because it's still part of an educational visit?
Yeah. My. If I can, through the chair, I can clarify that a little bit more. It would be the same as the license type that Trader Joe's or Bevmo has to do tastings for any of the other products that they have. So it doesn't necessarily need to be during an event, so to say. So as long as they have the required 86 license, which they need to have, a regular alcohol permit as well, license, they would be able to do that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Sein.
Sorry. Can you come back? Yeah, through the chair. Well, first, I did want to comment that I appreciate you deciding to invest in Menlo Park and Santa Cruz Avenue. I know a lot of residents are excited about new things coming on that street, myself included. And I was just curious, in the staff report, my understanding is that you could add more square footage to this location per the allowed development standards? And so I'm just curious if you are willing to share why you're keeping the space limited to the square footage versus going bigger?
If I could clarify, so the development standards that I think you're referring to for the GFA, the building itself is, they're using the entirety of the building itself. There's no, they could, if they wanted to, remodel, rebuild, add more GFA, but they're not proposing that at this time.
Yeah. I think my question is, since they could add more, why they chose not to? Yeah.
I'm not totally following the question.
Let me rephrase. My understanding is that you could, I'm assuming it would involve adding a second story. You could add.
Understood.
More space to this location if you wanted to. And I'm just curious why you chose not to, because, you know, Menlo Park is going through some zoning changes downtown, and we're always curious why people make certain decisions.
We did not consider adding a second story, and the 4,500-ish square feet was pretty much perfect for our purposes. So to be honest, this is the first discussion we will have had about that.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Silverstein.
So I had that exact same question, but actually wanted to direct it to the land owner, and that's why I asked initially whether or not you were in our presence. And so to Commissioner Silverstein's point, part of our downtown-specific plan is to add vibrancy and density and housing. We want to encourage all these things. And I'm curious, as part of this renovation project, whether or not you considered doing a full remodel, adding housing on top of the exact same establishment on the ground floor, whether or not that's something that came up as an opportunity that was interesting or something you didn't consider whatsoever? And curious as to your thought process there.
You know, we did not consider that, partly because of the economy of that right now, the economics of a deal of development right now is very difficult right now. Construction costs have gone up quite extravagantly, and interest rates have gone up quite a bit. So no, we did not consider that this time. I don't think it would be economically feasible for us right now.
Thank you. And then through the chair, I had one question for city staff. I know that there have been established some parklets along Santa Cruz Avenue, and I know that City Council implemented a more formal process to apply for these sometime last year, and was just curious as to whether or not this specific location would be eligible to apply for a parklet to add more potential real estate in lieu of the adjacent parking, either on Santa Cruz or Chestnut? And if that's, this is a location that's at all eligible, eligible or potentially, or not at all?
Thank you. So the location is eligible for a parklet if they decide they want to apply for one. There, earlier on in our discussions, as we were reviewing the project, they did express interest in applying for a parklet. The planning staff, the city, is still evaluating the requirements for parklets, and it was our recommendation to the client applicant that they, once we get those requirements finalized, then they could come back during their construction process to apply for a parklet.
Seeing no hands raised, I'll take this opportunity. I would like to just share my personal enthusiasm and excitement about having something, a project like this, that speaks to two of my great loves, wine and cheese, but also my third love, which is increasing downtown vibrancy and specifically hitting some key goals of our general plan. I'm glad that a number of elements and materials, specifically the windows, are being reused and not replaced. I think that's both economically and environmentally sound decision. I do hope that the business is successful enough that the budget eventually allows for the evaluation and inclusion of solar panels. That was mentioned as being outside of budget and scope at this point. And I hope that, you know, between the lessee and the building owner, that becomes a conversation based on success in the future. For me, the sign cabinets look very nice. I think they're an improvement over what is there today. I particularly thought it was interesting. I liked the variation of the wood slats from vertical and horizontal to kind of have consistency across the storefront, but to differentiate the two spaces. And I think, for me, the, I will be supporting for sure the use permit component of things because I think it proves the point about adding additional convenience to the city. I do wish that the visuals that are part of the staff report allowed me to have a better understanding of where there's more variation in color. So between the repainted stucco and the stone on the bottom, I'm a little bit concerned that there is just a very homogeneous feel to it. I would almost like to see a little bit more variation between those two materials in their color and the way it's depicted. It looks like they are the same color. I'm not sure if, for example, the paint has been picked to match that stone or to complement it with a slight variation. There's a mention in the staff report about the facade on the Chestnut Street side of things, and that, you know, since city ordinances recommend avoiding big blank walls without architectural features, there's a mention of considering a mural at some point in the future. That had me go back and look in detail at what's on that wall today. There's actually a very simple painting detail that I think makes that side. There's actually a very simple painting detail that I think makes that side of the building more visually appealing. There's a horizontal line that kind of continues the sign cabinets around the corner. It's a white line, and it just allows for just enough visual differentiation that I would like to see something like that continued just on that side of the building so that it just doesn't look like a single, uniform-colored stucco wall on the Chestnut Street side of things. So I will, I think folks can call that up and take a look at it. So I fully support the aesthetic improvements, as well as the two alcohol licenses and the modification for serving alcohol outside that are requested here. I would, will probably add in, when we get to a motion, a request for something that's just going to make the Chestnut Street side of things a little more visually appealing from the beginning. Other commissioners? Oh, Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. You expressed that all very well, summed it up all very well. I'm supportive, supportive of staff's conclusions as to appropriateness of the licenses and appropriateness of the design in the downtown district for the objective guidelines. I really appreciate, Chair, you noting the existing stone, so thank you to the applicant team for noting that that will be kept rather than painted over. It'll be, I am not always a fan of dark gray, but I think it depends on the context. And what I appreciate in this case is that I think, either in the applicant letter or in the staff report, it was a conscious choice to contrast with the neighbors, which I think is a beige color. And so in that sense, I appreciate the conscious choice of choosing a color to create variety, a certain vibe or feel along the streetscape, which you can see in the streetscape elevation. And I think, considering that many businesses are not open at night, and this one will have some evening hours, you can imagine that dark color fading into the background and the lights from within lighting it up. So I'm supportive of the color choice. But to the Chair's comments on the Chestnut Street side, you all seem like creative people, so I, you know, some creative mural engagement with the art community, some, something, something on the Chestnut Street side. And it looks like a back, back door to the back of house stuff, but maybe that's kind of a place to have fun and let loose a little bit. Thank you.
I'll just say that I appreciate the project, and I'm not an architect, and, but I'm excited about it, and I would support the use permits that are recommended. I was curious, when I was reading the staff report, I thought that Kefiko also had an alcoholic beverage point-of-sale permit, maybe? Or there's a new, there's a new Springline picnic supplies and gourmet groceries vendor that has some really interesting Italian amaros, and so I'm guessing they have that kind of fancy permit, too. But I, we used to have a much more full-service alcoholic beverage store in town that's not here anymore, and I think having something right downtown that people can walk to makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, thank you. I would also like to share my appreciation for you pointing out that wall on Chestnut. And I agree that I think just a blank wall is not ideal. Yeah, we all want a more vibrant Santa Cruz Avenue, but let's not leave Chestnut out. So I would also support just something could be minor to kind of spruce up that wall.
Through the chair, if I could just go back, Commissioner Beruzzi, was there a question in your statement?
I was confused of, we didn't see the Mercado.
Oh, yeah, if I'm, would you like to go?
Would that not have the same kind of permit that we're talking about? Or?
So Springline is actually in a different census tract. So the listing that's part of the staff report is only for the census tract that they're going to be in.
Okay.
But you are correct. They do have, they do have that type of license as well.
And if I may, so the Springline development does have a use permit that identifies a number of ABC licenses and types that can be permitted by staff at the staff level. It went through a previous use permit process to get effectively what is more like a blanket use permit, given the number of operators at the site, to allow for multiple ABC licenses. And then staff evaluates, works with the ABC to confirm compliance, and then issues a license as long as they're consistent with that use permit. So those individual licenses, like the Kefiko market that Commissioner Beruzzi's mentioning, would not go before the Planning Commission because there's a previous permit that allows for a certain number of licenses, and I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Interesting clarification. Yeah, thank you. Very helpful context. Vice Chair Eric.
Thank you. I'll just quickly say, sorry, thank you for coming to Menlo Park. Commissioner Farrak stole my exact question, so we already covered that. Thank you for listening to us discuss gas station signs. Hopefully, it will make the city you're coming to feel that much better. And I'll just say, as a five-year resident of New York City who never could get a table at Batarde, I'm very excited to go to Menlo Park.
I'm happy to move if no one has any further discussion.
Uh-oh, we're getting punchy. Commissioner Silverstein, go for it. Oh.
I would be very happy to move to approve the resolution as stated in the staff report with the condition that the applicant look into some design element on the blank wall on the Chestnut side.
Question to staff, is that enough granularity or specificity on the additional condition?
Thank you. So at the beginning of the review process, the applicants did express interest in putting a mural on that side of the building. We advised them that it would need to be an additional review through the Planning Commission for a mural. And at the time, this might have changed, but they had not settled on a design yet. And so it was our recommendation to move forward with their use permit and architectural control first, and then if they decided later on down the road they wanted to, they could come back and apply for a signed permit for a mural on that side.
So with that series of events, there was, there's a, there could be a multiple-month or longer lag just between this step and construction? Like, would it be, would any of the steps of beginning and completing construction be contingent upon that seeking permission for the mural and getting it approved and so on?
Sorry, I should correct myself. It wouldn't be a signed permit. It would be a revision to the architectural control permit. So we don't necessarily need to make it contingent on the construction. If they decide they want to, if you, sorry. So it depends on how you structure the condition, whether or not they could receive their, like, final sign-off without coming back and having the mural approved. That would be up to you to condition it that way. Or if you wanted to have it, you know, come back to the Planning Commission, or what would be an architectural control review, so it would come back.
So in the spirit of my feedback, perhaps I can offer this to the motion. Without being prescriptive as to what the visual differentiation should be, it could be a mural, it could be painted detail, like what's there today with a different, different door color and a horizontal white line that continues roughly parallel to the sign cabinet. Could we say that there are, there is a requirement to include some level of additional detail that could be administratively approved?
It might be difficult for staff to make that judgment call and what would be appropriate. We don't, I don't think that the SP has any sort of requirements for something like that. So it could be a substantial conformance memo that would come back to the Planning Commission?
I would hate to see, have to come back to a full Planning Commission meeting, so a substantial conformance memo seems like a viable solution, in my opinion. And I turn that to our motion maker.
Would it be sufficient, as per your feedback, Chair Schindler, to stipulate as part of the motion that the project simply does not retain the Chestnut wall blank and leave it up to discretion of the applicant as well as city staff to provide the design that they so choose for that, with the understanding that it might come back under, you know, to the, to the Planning Commission for potential review, not in a meeting? But the words that I would be inclined to use would just be to not leave the wall blank. And then whether or not that includes a mural or design elements that are there today or something else that's creative that I would not be thinking of is fine by me, if other people on the commission are satisfied with that language.
I'm not sure if this is a question for staff or the motion maker, but if we make this a condition, does that mean that construction cannot be started? Is that, or they don't get their permit to start construction until this is approved? Is that the goal? I think my feeling would be, we'd want construction to start, and maybe before the final permit is issued, we'd want something like this to be, let's say, approved by staff or submitted to the city, rather than making a condition of starting anything?
So in reference to what you're referring to on the building, those details are, it's very hard to see unless you're like right up on top of it. Those are reveals in the stucco. Those aren't painted-on stripes, so they're those kind of U-shaped channels that are in there. So I think those are going to remain regardless if they, they're not going to be removed from the plans, or at least that's what they're calling for.
I'm happy to propose a motion to pass the resolutions as written without any architectural control, with the understanding that the Planning Commission has a desire to see awesome designs on our walls around downtown and it not be a formal condition of the actual resolution. I have faith that the applicant and its project wants this to succeed as much as possible, and on a personal level, I'm satisfied with that. Obviously, other commissioners have expressed more specific criteria, and so I leave it to anyone else on the commission to actually put it into the motion itself if you so choose.
Commissioner Seale.
Through the chair, I was just wondering if, since staff has indicated that the applicant already was thinking about doing something on that wall, if perhaps we could get a quick piece of input from them as far as what they were thinking, maybe that would put our minds at ease.
We essentially left that at the idea board stage. We were actually developing ideas for the aesthetics of the Chestnut Street side as we were also being advised that we might want to push that to phase two for the reasons that were already described. So we don't have anything formally to share at the moment.
Would you mind sharing, like, how likely you are to do something? What happens to things on the idea board? Because I'm, my, my wife calls the idea board things that she doesn't want to do that I proposed to her.
We would be thrilled to add a mural to our design package on the Chestnut Street side.
And as the person who sort of started a lot, part, some of these, these pieces of feedback, I certainly don't want to do anything that stands in the way of this project for all of the reasons previously expressed by me and other members of the commission. So I wouldn't want to necessarily to make it any of the construction initiation or completion contingent upon this. And I'm not quite, I'm not hearing a solid way of doing this that is, that allows for staff to approve something that could be so subjective as not blank and additional, and additional artistic detail. But even so, I think the point about there being channels in the stucco, variations in the facade that are physical as well as color-based makes this complicated, and I am supportive of the project. So I think I would be amenable to supporting as written, but with just the, know the color, the context that there was discussion about a blank wall and that being a sensitivity, personally, and from a number of members of the commission. So I think we are back to you, Commissioner Silverstein, as a person who has initiated a motion.
Yes. So I so moved to adopt the resolution as written in the staff report with the good-faith understanding that the applicant is well aware. We, as a planning commission, would love to see there not be a blank wall on the Chestnut Street side.
We have a first from Commissioner Silverstein and a second from Vice Chair Eric. If there is, oh, I think, oh, Commissioner Farrak. She was just getting really excited. Okay. Great. So with that, we will go ahead and call for a vote on item F2. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yes.
Lost my note, hang on, taking notes. Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Seale.
Yes.
Commissioner Silverstein.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is seven yeses and no nos. Congratulations, the motion passes. We are thrilled. Thank you for being here tonight, for engaging our questions and giving us additional context. Congratulations on your project. We all look very much, very much look forward to your grand opening. All right. So with that, that closes section F, the public hearing for our meeting this evening. We move into section G, informational items. As these are informational updates, there is no action to be taken by the Planning Commission. There will not be any public comment or commission discussion on these topics. This is really more of a one-way information sharing. We have two items in our informational items. The first is an update on the 2024-25 capital improvement plan for the city. And actually, Mr. Prada, before we start this item, I would like to gauge interest in a, or interest and need in a brief break. We will take a brief break. It is 9:11, we will, or 9:12. We will come back at 9:17. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We are back, and we will pick up right where we left off with item G1, our informational item. Re- item, receiving an update on the 2024-25 capital improvement plan. Mr. Prada.
Yes, thank you. I'll handle this item. This is an update from city staff, specifically Public Works. It provides an update to the planning commissioners on the updated, or the current budget cycle and the CIP program that's in the budget cycle as relates to general plan policies. So it's an informational item. There's no discussion, but we're happy to answer clarifying questions. What we will recommend is that if commissioners do have questions of staff, to reach out directly to our Public Works Director with a copy to me, and we'll make sure that we can respond to commissioners as individuals. And if there's something that the full commission would benefit from, we'll send that email from staff. But the idea would be, if there are questions tonight, to relay those to our Public Works Director directly. But with that, we can definitely take clarifying questions. I do want to make one update. I know the report does mention that these would be discussed as part of the budget workshop. That is planned for the 23rd. In the staff reports identifies the 23rd. If that does change, there'll be a notification to the community. If the budget workshop does change, it was tentatively planned for the 23rd. I do want to flag that as, as we are getting close to it, and if the commission's interested to participate as individuals in that process. There also will be the public hearing on the budget on June 11th, where these items will be discussed more fully. So that concludes my update. Any questions on the report, be happy to answer those or, or help facilitate responses from Public Works.
There we go. Commissioner Barr, Commissioner Farrak, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that, that's helpful context, just to kind of know. I just had two questions, well, and a comment. Is that all right right now? Comments, or are we doing public comment?
So because this is an informational item, we will not be doing discussion on the DAAs. We will not be doing public comment. This is sort of, if there's a clarifying question about the information, we can do that. If there's a more detailed question or a comment with sort of feedback and directional, you can follow the guidance from Mr. Prada about emailing.
Great. Well, so there, thank you. Through the chair, I will, I will proceed with my questions for Mr. Prada. But very quickly, there is an impressive amount of work here that's, you know, obviously in various stages of progress, so well done there. So I'm not trying to find, you know, single out the few things that don't apparently have, that are, that are in the on-hold category, but a couple that stood out that kind of made me a little concerned and was curious from Public Works, why or kind of what then in, and specifically, it's the Line 32, the storm system funding study, somewhat related Line 35 utility undergrounding, both of which I see as kind of climate change resilient elements to protecting our community. So as, those are the two that kind of stood out that I was like, huh, yes, there's a whole lot going on, but those seem really important, given what, you know, the severity of the storms that we're facing these days. So, thanks.
We'll, we'll take that, and we'll have Ms. Mitch, our Public Works Director, follow-up with Commissioner Farrak directly. Thanks.
Thank you. I do not see any other requests for clarifying questions, so we'll wrap up on G1. Thank you for that update on the capital improvement plan. G2, future meeting dates and possible topics.
Yes, thank you. The next meeting is June 3rd. At that meeting, staff is targeting a study session on the updates that staff has been working on, on the city's first-ever environmental justice element and the updates to our safety element. So staff is in the process of formalizing an updated staff report, doing outreach to the community. We have done community meetings. Over the last couple of weeks, there have been two meetings in the Bell Haven neighborhood, and this opportunity will be for the planning commission to provide staff feedback on its work on the environmental justice and safety element. So that, that'll be the only item on the agenda on June 3rd, given the scale of it. And further out, we're still, still looking at the agenda, so I don't have a update yet.
Thank you. Are there any other informational items from commissioners?
Through the chair, if I may. I have one more non-
Oh, please.
-scheduling for planning commission-related, but staff did send the commissioners an opportunity for a training that's put on with our partners at 21 Elements. It's the second of a series. I know some commissioners were able to attend the first one, and I know some are new commissioners since the first of this series, but it is the 30th. And so if any members of the commission are interested in signing up, please do sign up directly with the link that staff provided and just let myself know so that I can just keep track of who's attending the, the meetings. And so that just concludes my reports and, or my informational items. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I have one small informational item, just to share. Back in our February 26th meeting, when we reviewed the annual progress of the housing element, members of the public and commissioners asked quite a number of questions about the progress our city was making toward our Rena goals, how Menlo Park compared to other relative cities, and it was a great discussion. The Mercury News happens to have published an article yesterday that is titled "Five Charts That Show Which Bay Area Cities Are Building the Most Housing," that I had thought did an excellent job of addressing many of the key themes that the public and commissioners asked. And I wanted to mention it just as a, in passing, because I think it's interesting information. And if there are, I don't see any other informational items being flagged. Thus, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 9:24. Have a good one.